Mayor Carnahan and Angel, can you both hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you just fine.
Thank you. Mayor Carnahan says that she cannot find a room and she's in a training session, so she may have to jump off. I'll try to jump on in thirty minutes, sorry.
Okay, good afternoon. I'd like to call the special city council meeting June twenty-sixth at three-thirty P M to order. This is a special council meeting, so the only the items on the agenda can be discussed. There's no open forum today at today's meeting. So first call the order. Second, I just want to let everyone know that the mayor is not in attendance today. She's up in Duluth attending the Minnesota Sig. Minnesota City. Sorry, I'll try it again. Attending the League of Minnesota Cities Annual Conference up there. Networking and doing educational stuff on behalf of the city with other elected. Mayors and council members across the state. So that's why she's not in attendance with us today. So. Item B. Assignment of specific city administrator duties and responsibilities on an interim basis for city clerk. And assess the specific duties, treasurer duties and responsibilities on an interim basis for. Finance specialist. So. I'm not sure if everyone has time to read through the information in the packet on this. Anybody questions? You want to kick it off, Jesse? If you got questions, comments?
I don't exactly have any questions, no. I think the purpose of this was because we left a few things. Unanswered and open-ended last Tuesday, so to be able to sew this up. Out of fairness to Kiki and to Maggie, I went over the duties and responsibilities. I think it looks very good. I think it's a lot of duties and responsibilities. You two already performed too, so. I don't have any questions unless Kiki or Maggie, you have anything that you want to add or any remarks to what's in front of us? That'd be the only thing I'd have.
Mayor Carnahan had a couple of questions about that agenda item. I don't know if you want to. She sent an email to that effect. I did send it. I don't know if you want to address those questions for Mayor Carnahan?
Sure, the packet, you know, put together. So. Yourself, Kiki and Maggie, is that who put together the packet stuff? Kiki did? Okay, so Kiki put together the packet.
The, the, I was just gonna say the city administrator job description, isn't that what was what put forth i- in two thousand and nineteen by the council? Correct? So these are the jobs that are on. With Nisswa or the descriptions, so. Did you? So what was done is someone looked at the descriptions and then just said this is more finances, this is more administrative, broke it down? Okay.
Yeah, so basically from understanding it and from what I read in the packet, it's our existing. Policy that we have in place in our for city administrator, right? We just kind of split up the existing descriptions.
Yeah, we just took the existing job description as it was approved back in nineteen or whatever the date was. Kiki and I sat down and just tried to figure out what we can. Easily move into based on what our duties already are. And then sometime, some of them you can see that says Maggie and Kiki that we will work together on to try to accomplish those tasks.
Yeah, and as I skimmed it, obviously some of the budgeting stuff like that, that falls into your wheelhouse and I, I think it made sense to me.
And it per direction of the council at the last meeting, you know, it was just told to us, just try and figure it out for yourselves and then present something to us. So this is what we're, this is just our first draft, first shot at, at you seeing this, so.
Yeah, no, and I read through it and. Makes sense to me in accordance, you know, in accordance to what you guys have been doing in the past, so unless anybody else.
No, I ju- I just want to make it clear and clarify so everybody knows this isn't something that we just pulled out of hat and here it is. This is something that's on the books. We know it's in there. It's under the job description in the city, so it was taken and as we did direct you to.
Absolutely, yeah. And I don't know if maybe Ms. Angel has any comments?
I don't.
Thank you.
So, yeah, so I'm, I'm kind of good with the different areas that are taking over, especially going into budgeting season. I think that's appropriate. And necessary for us, you know? So.
Okay. With that, I'd like to make a motion for the assignment of specific city administrator duties and responsibilities on an interim basis for the city clerk. Also, in the same motion with the assignment of specific deputy treasurer duties. And responsibilities on an interim basis for the financial specialist as presented and discussed.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Okay, number C, discuss and determine. Determination of taking any action in regard to compensation increase for. City clerk and finance specialist performing such dues and responsibilities on interim basis. So this is the same as before. You know, we had raised. Kiki's position to step number one in there.
On the city administrator.
Yeah, on the city administrator line, and so. I guess that's what I would propose going back to that for Kiki and Maggie since they're sharing roles in both. And adding the extra duties to their already current jobs, so. Just stay in alignment with what we had done roughly a month ago. But discussion?
I just want to know where does, where does our labor attorney stand on that?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so it would. Be a pay or a wage differential, correct?
Right.
Okay, then I, I, I opened to discussion whatever the city wants to consider. I think we've provided options last time. It'd be the same idea, I'm assuming here?
Correct, yeah, so this is, you know, my recommendation would be in, in accordance, in accordance with what was done last time. Just the same schedule, the same pay, you know, as last time.
I think that's fine to do here. It's up to council to decide on that, obviously, but yes, I think that that's more than.
And that was grade, grade one, step one?
Yep, grade one, step one.
Because I really wasn't part of those discussions the last time. Angel mentioned that there was a few options that were provided to you. What were those options, just out of curiosity? Because I don't think there was anything in a packet for that.
Angel?
Yep, give me one second, I can see.
Just to. Jock the council's memory also, you just had a, an interim city administrator that made ninety dollars an hour. That you just hired and, and he left.
Alright, so. A couple of considerations is doing the percentage between the step one. An hourly wage. And then there is also the option of a percent or a defined dollar amount per hour. And then. A defined dollar amount per hour based on roughly a thousand dollars a month. And then about like a ten percent. It just depends on what. It depends. Sometimes it's nice to have a clean number, but cities are. Different on this. Generally, they just do the first option where you do the, between the steps and the grades.
Thank you.
And I believe we had just picked the steps and the grades because that was already defined for us last time, you know, as a, as a benchmark. So open for discussion, anybody?
Mark, any thoughts? Suggestions?
I think to be consistent and just go with what we did with Kiki, just. Stay with that track.
For both?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I would say, yeah, that we just do what we did before.
And do we have a motion?
Somebody wants to make a motion?
What is that dollar total figure? Because it says both, it says grade on both the column and the row.
It's right down here at the bottom.
At a moment.
Right, yep.
Grade twenty.
Oh, no. This is a.
Kiki, can you give some, the, the highlighted row, what is that exactly?
The highlighted row is actually the city administrators' grade, which is grade twenty, and that is the range, the different steps. So you have steps one through ten. So the range at step one. For anybody who's inexperienced and coming in would have been forty-eight ninety-three. The highest step. Would be sixty-five oh eight. And that, and you hired your previous interim at ninety.
Okay, that's from the council?
Yeah. Questions, thoughts? Make a motion?
Do you mind if I jump in here just for a second?
That, right there.
This one right here, okay.
Please do.
Forty-eight.
Okay, I just wanted to keep this in mind. The interim city administrator that was hired at ninety dollars an hour, there were a little bit of different. Circumstances there. He did the full-time city administrator duties. He had decades of experience. The city didn't pay for benefits, so it was a little bit more in line with the market for that experience. So I just wanted to put that out there when you are considering this, just part of the consideration.
Yeah, correct.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion in regards to the determination of taking action regarding compensation increases for both the city clerk and financial specialists. For performing such duties and responsibilities on an interim basis for both to be considered grade one. Excuse me, grade twenty, step one for the city administrator forty-eight dollars ninety-three cents.
Second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, post, motion carries. Okay. Number D.
Can, can I ask a question? Is it going to be retro payback to Tuesday?
That is a great question. I had a note on that. Am I able to amend that motion to include the retroactive pay to last? It was Tuesday, well, Wednesday essentially.
Okay. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, post. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. D, discuss and determination taking action in regards to the search process for an interim city administrator. To be retained during the transition period of council. So just like we did last time. You know, take the steps to look for an interim to come in. Last meeting we heard, you know, from the city attorney and different people. Just based upon the timeframe and stuff, be a. Positive thing to do.
And I think to your point, to council member Hall, it's a. Another reason why to call this meeting in regards to the time sensitivity of it, letting another three weeks pass before this would have been able to been. Passed along to the staff to be able to source this position. It is of high importance. And I think that we all see the value in having that dedicated interim city administrator. I did, I. Hope that we can find somebody that'll be interested.
So do I. How are we going to do the interviews? This time around? Same as last time through the personnel?
Um.
Or do you want to go a different route?
Angel, is it appropriate to do it the same way as before, assign the?
Certainly, you can do the same process.
I have a proposition on that note, though. I mean, what about thoughts of. Assigning a council designee and to ask Mr. Keith Hiller, whom we've now all met via interviews, to be a part of that selection committee?
Right, the, the other thing too is, is, is. The interim city administrator should be here for a full time, not. Twelve hours a week as we had with Tim. It needs to be forty hour a week. I- in my opinion, that's just how I think.
Okay. Um. We have not spoke into Keith though, or have anything from him, so I don't know that we could vote on that tonight, or if that would be. You know, because we don't have any idea, I think in the. In the effort of moving stuff forward, I think that we would still have. So last time I can talk about the process, we had Angel and the law firm help reach out to these candidates, you know, Tim. Was a recommendation from them. Also, the league had a list of people too, that we went down through and contacted, you know, if we want to. I think that we do the same thing, contact the league, go down through their contact, make the first initial. You know, contact with these people. I also know. Tom, our city attorney, maybe had a couple of other resources too for somebody like this, but we just reach out to them and if we want to interview. All the candidates, that's up to us. We can set it up where, you know, whoever shows interest in it come before the meeting and.
So the, so the initial interview, if I'm hearing you right, you're suggesting as a whole council have them come in?
Yeah, if the council wishes, you know, last time we had four candidates and just in the effort of time and whatever, you know, we narrowed it down based upon. You know, help from the attorneys and, and just kind of the, I guess, the criteria. Last, you know, Tim had a tremendous amount of experience in this area. So, but. I think in the effort of moving it forward quickly and swiftly, we'd still go through the.
Labor attorneys and everything going there.
Yeah, that's what we need to do. Reach out to the league. We just got to have a couple of people appointed to do that, and I think that's a legitimate role for the. Personnel committee to do. And then set up interviews for everyone to interview them here again. Across the board. Is there, is there another way to do it, Angel, other than that?
No, it's, it, I would stick with the same process and. On the note for Keith, I think it's better to at least get a take from him on it before making a motion on it. That's what I would recommend, at least, meeting with him.
Yeah. Maybe, you know, we can start this process, but then we can reach out to Keith, see if he wants to amend his kind of contract with us to help do interviews with him. You know, I think that would be a, a good thing.
Thing would be a great idea. I was impressed by it. I was impressed by it.
So that way maybe he could help do some interviews ahead of time and give his feedback.
And then perhaps we could. Consider a council designee to be a part of that with him, or just enable him to do it on his own entirely?
Yeah, either way, I guess I'm open.
Would you be interested in being a part of that process, council member Hall? If it was to be Keith?
Depending upon the timeframe, right now I'm just swamped, so I don't. You know, I think that, you know, personnel committee reaches out, let's get a list of people and start there. In the meantime, then we can. You know, we can have Kiki reach out to Keith and ask him that question, you know, and see if he'd be willing to, to do that for us.
Sure.
And then, and then go from there, but at least we can get the process started with getting a list of names put together.
Right, I think my.
Oh, sorry, can I chime in here? I just, I was able to join. This is Jennifer.
Yeah.
Hey, so I'm at the League of Minnesota's, oh, well, I can't even talk. I'm at the League of Minnesota Cities Annual Conference. And as we did when we went through the process the first time, the league has a list, so I have that list. So whoever wants to take a peek at that, obviously. There are certain people that weren't available because we reached out to a lot of people from that list the first go around and a lot of people just weren't available. But we already have kind of a starting framework, so I, I didn't hear everything you guys said, but I thought I heard maybe you said Keith would. Potentially lead that process. I can forward him everything that we had had up to this point.
Yeah, so Jennifer, I had mentioned that we had got that list from the league.
Yep.
You know, and I said, you know, Kiki could reach out to Keith to see if he wants to help us with the interview process of some of these, but. We can reach out to everybody again, see, you know, as personnel committee, and then see who's available, then, you know, get Keith involved to help us with it.
Yeah, because I have notes too, like when we were reaching out the first go around, Joe, like. There were a lot of people that just weren't available on that list, but I, off the top of my head, I don't know because I don't have the list in front of me. But we can send it, if it's, if it sounds like Keith is helping, we can certainly send all that, all the notes and the information to him. That's no big deal.
So I guess. Me too. I guess I would make a motion that we would. Assign the personnel committee to reach out to the list from the league, also to reach out to anybody else from our city attorney. Or our labor attorney that either one of them might know of people that would be interested for this. Once we have that. List of people that are interested. Then we would have Kiki reach out to Keith to see if he would help do a first initial interview for us with him. And then. Have it come before the council for us to interview.
I second.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay. Um, next item, discuss and determine taking. Action in regard to appointing or having the city council. Personal liaisons, public works, liquor committee. Discuss and motion. So basically some of these committees, you know, if we want to discuss. Rules, appointments with that. Processes.
So I don't know if you guys saw my email, sorry, because I sent it to Kiki, but I know it was a retirement party today and everybody's probably been busy.
Yeah, we got it.
Oh, everybody got it? Okay, because there's like a commission and committee. Process or stuff in our city ordinances, and so I just, I don't have any of that stuff in front of me, and I know. The labor attorney didn't have that stuff either, but I don't know if that, that information came forward before this meeting or not.
That information, I haven't seen that information, but I know it is in, in the ordinances, so in order to change anything or eliminate, we'd have to. Uh, that information, I haven't seen that information, but I know it is in, in the ordinances. So in order to change anything or eliminate, we'd have to change the ordinances on that. Um, I'd also like to get feedback from the department heads on what their thoughts are. I think I know what some of them are, but I mean, that'd just be my thought. Um, uh, the also, the other thing too is, is my opinion is a lot of these things would be handled by city administrator and not the, um, uh, council members. Um, so I think it would be a good thing to go down this path and determine whether we want these committees or not. Um, and, and not just personnel liaisons, but all liaisons. But I'd kinda like to get feedback from the department heads first.
So is it, um, a question I have is, what, cause I was confused by the agenda item. Is it, are we talking about council liaisons, or are we talking about having the committees, or are we talking about both?
I would just speak, I would say that we'd still have liaisons, but some of the committees, I mean, I can just speak for, you know, one that I was on, you know, a year ago, you know, at Public Works, you know, um, great in its intent, but now that I've seen the information, you know, that was presented there and some of the discussions there, um, and kind of digging into, um, some of the information, you know, even maybe with, uh, in regards to like the land we purchased or something as an example, I don't know that, um, all that information of no fault of anybody's, just the way that the current structure's been set up in the city, that all that information always adequately has got relayed back to all the council for us to have the full picture on what's going on and being talked about, because there is a separate three-hour meeting that only one of us was involved in, you know, and so, um, like you say, no blame to anybody, it's just kind of the current function, and I think, at least for that one, um, because a lot of those questions are, um, budget-driven, you know, whether it be roads or stuff like that, some of that information, you know, even some of the feedback at those meetings, I know, hey, this is great information, but this should be presented to the council. And so, I would say that's just my personal feedback specific, you know, with one of them as an example.
Yeah, my, my perspective on the matter is also very, very similar. To have the proper city administrator slash clerk structure with the deputy clerk that was, uh, adopted by the council in twenty seventeen. It's also, it's, it's also in our code of conduct that, that we do not direct staff, that we do not direct department heads, that they take council action. So, we have, we have two separate items being carried at the same time. We have to decide, and it's, it's prevalent to the timing now, also with us seeking to have that full-time city administrator slash clerk, what type of government are we? Right?
So, I think also onto that too, I think it, it confuses some of the staff.
Absolutely.
So, I wanna eliminate the confusion. I think we have good, adequate, intelligent department heads. So let's use that and, and, you know.
Right, and it's, it's where the city administrator essentially works directly with those department heads and on a council basis.
And maybe this is also something too, once Keith has kinda done his whole assessment of the city, you know, will maybe ha- have some helpful feedback for all of us and staff on how we should.
Right, so I think, maybe this, we should, we should table this for now and come back to it once we get the assessment, um.
But it's definitely a good thing to talk about and discuss as we look ahead on, on changing this. This is something, you know, kind of all of these things be on the table to discuss as we fine-tune.
Correct. I think Mayor Carter had had something, sir.
Oh, I would, well, if it's gonna be tabled, uh, basically what I was gonna say is, um, so on the, well, on the liaison port, well, on both. So first on both, because Keith is doing that assessment right now, and we're paying him the money to do it, it, I would love to see what his report out is, because I think this is a part of his assessment, um, before we take decisive action one way or another, otherwise, kinda why are we paying him right to do the assessment? Um, and then the second thing I would say, as it relates to the council liaisons to committees, I do agree that once we get an administrator, whatever that structure looks like, um, to minimize confusion with staff and with council, right? It's not just with staff, it's with us too. Um, so we have a more streamlined approach, and we're all aligned and understanding of that. Um, as it relates to committees where we have members of the public as a part of those committees, the only thing I would say there is, I think that it would behoove us not just to hear from the department heads of what they think of those committees, but we should also hear from the people that have served or are currently serving on those committees, if it's members of the public, because, you know, it, it, it would be good to get their perspective as well, and just to make sure we're, we're hearing all angles before we're taking any decisive action in that regard. That was all I had to say.
Yeah, for sure. So.
I'll just make a motion to table item E.
Second. Any other discussion? Took a July meeting, or just table it definitely?
Table, I just table it until we get the assessment back from, uh, uh, our consultant.
Yeah. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Post. Motion carries. Okay, um, next one, um, discuss, um, regarding the possibility of adding an additional warden, warning siren to the city of Nisswa.
The question I have is, uh, uh.
Todd has some information on that for us?
Yep, um, I don't know if Jesse, if you wanna kick this one off, it sounds like.
Sure.
I guess contacted.
I'll butter the bread and give the other half of it back to you to make the sandwich. Um, uh, I was contacted by a few neighbors on the south side of Nisswa. Um, I would say, south of the Hole-in-the-Day Bay access towards Sinisam even, where the, where the city limit is, uh, it was multiple people simply stating, we cannot hear a siren when there, when, when we know that there is one going off in the community, or we're getting a mobile alert. Does the city know of this? Is the city able to address this? So I brought that forward to, uh, the folks responsible and the uh, fire department, police department, asked for their input, and Todd, thanks for putting this together.
Yeah, so, um, I've been in contact with a guy named Dan from Federal Warning Systems. Um, they're the ones that have installed our previous sirens, the three that we have. Um, you'll see those on the map that you have there in blue. Um, the circles with the estimated coverage areas.
You're gonna laugh, but it was copied and blackened.
Oh, okay. Well, there's, there's one with three circles on it, one in the downtown area here, um, one out off of, kind of in the Lower Roy Lake Road area there by the sewer plant. And then one down at the intersection of Camp Lincoln and County Route thirteen. Those are the three sirens we currently have. Those circles are estimated coverage areas that those sirens provide, um, just an estimate. It's obviously vary with uh, vegetation density, wind direction, um, air density, things like that, so. They provided us with that. Um, there's another one that shows up on mine as a red one, um. So the ones with, with more than those three are just potential, very preliminary locations or new ones, um, something on the south end of the city, I was kinda looking at the one kind of towards the south end of Gull Lake Drive there, right next to the highway. Um, if you have it near water, they said the coverage area would nearly double, so, um, a spot like that would probably blast it pretty far to the east and west with, with two lakes right there, so. If we were to go ahead with something, um, other things to look into with that, um, obviously electrical hookup and property to do it on. So, next time they have a tech in the area, they were willing to have them get in contact with me, and we're gonna go out and actually look at feasible sites. Um, Tom might be something you wanna come out and do with us too, probably, so. Um, but everything's pretty preliminary at this point, um, and then there's a quote there too, um, with estimated cost for that.
And that is per siren?
Correct. That's, that's for one siren. Um, there may be some additional things. Other than that, I don't see an actual pole in there, or, um.
The land?
Land, depending on where it is.
Power feed?
Any power hookup fee as well, so.
So essentially, you could go.
Yeah.
Into, infinite, more or less. I mean, can I ask you what your professional opinion would be, based on some of the feedback from the folks on the south side of town? What, what would you suggest that this council do, that it's been brought up to us?
I, personally, I think with all the technology out there, um, you can sign up four alerts through the county on your smartphone, um, even other phones, you can still get text messages, things like that. Uh, you can still get weather radios, um, you know, all that stuff is fairly inexpensive and easy to use and operate. We did share the county alert system on our Facebook page, uh, back in May, so. That's on there, they can go, uh, click on that, just put your information in, um. Basically, when the sirens go off, your phone will go off at the same time.
And what, what is that app called again?
It's through the Crow Wing County website.
Crow Wing County website.
Yeah, I've, I've got it. I can't remember the name of it.
I, yeah, I don't remember the exact name offhand, but.
Outstanding.
So it's, it's pretty simple to do, so.
I know I had some pretty passionate neighbors that felt like this was something that should be addressed, so thank you all for bringing this forward and, uh, um.
Yeah, I guess maybe we'll wait until you and Tom get some more information.
Yeah.
Before we discuss anything.
Um, you want us to go further with getting uh, more detailed with power hookups and stuff like that at this point?
I have a thought. Um, when that gentleman from, or that representative from, uh, excuse me, Federal Signal comes.
Yep.
Passing through, and you and Tom are able to hop in a truck and check out some potential areas where it could be, maybe we can, or you could discuss with your liaison, uh, in regards to, is this something that maybe we could move forward with? Is there an opportunity for us to have this at a reasonable cost? Otherwise, what, what are we gonna have to do to get power, to get a pole, to get the land, of course?
Yep.
I mean, uh, I think the consideration for the expenditure on this is noteworthy.
Okay, but maybe too, somebody in the community wants to donate to it or something?
Absolutely.
Tom?
So does, so does the city own the, the land where the three are right now?
They're in city right away.
Okay.
City slash.
Jennifer, did you have something?
Oh, yeah, I just had a, I had a question for Jesse. Jesse, the neighbors that, uh, brought this to your attention, that they couldn't hear the sirens like the last time they went off, were they inside or were they outside? Do you know by chance, or?
No, I do not.
Okay, I just, so since I'm here at this, like I've been asking, you know, I've been learning from other elected officials and, and city officials and whatnot, and there was another mayor and city clerk and city administrator, cause I had brought up the siren, I just said, oh, there's part of our district where people were saying they couldn't hear them, and we've been having a lot of bad, like, weather this summer, so we wanna make sure everybody's safe, right? And they had said to me, well, were they inside or outside? And I said, I don't know the answer, why? And they're like, well, sirens aren't meant to be heard inside. Sirens are meant that if you're outside, you're alerted to take cover right away. And I'm like, oh, I guess I didn't, I didn't really know that. But anyway, that was just brought up, so, so I just said I'd ask.
Well, we'll, um, I guess we'll get in contact with them when they come up here, once they're in the area, go out and actually look at some sites and get some more information from them, and then once I get that, I'll pass it along.
And it, I also, I think, you know, we should educate the public about the app through the county. I mean, I'm close enough to two of the sirens, I can hear them in, in the house, but, but that's because I'm between two of them. Most people can't unless you're outside, but then that's why I have the app. I'll tell you what, it, it woke me up at two AM the other day.
It, it'll get your attention, yeah.
It does.
Right.
So, and I think it, if we educate the public on that, um, cause I don't think, right now, I, I, I know it's gonna be more than thirty-five thousand dollars to get this in there, so, and I'm, I don't have the appetite for that right now.
Yep.
But.
Yeah, we can continue pushing that out on our pages and.
Yeah, but if, if the, the rest of the council, they want you to look to extend that, that's fine, you know, to look into it, see what it is, but that, that's just my opinion.
Sure.
I appreciate the work that's.
Well, I, another note, I do know one of these neighbors. He's got land right next to the highway, so it, maybe he'd be happy to, uh, draw about a little piece for that, and there's power, so. Something we could connect with, and I guess just keep a pulse on it as I go by.
Already?
But thank you for looking into it.
Sounds good, yep, thank you.
Okay. Um, with that, um, anybody make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Adjourn.